Follow meeting in order.
I would like to extend the flag of the United States of America to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence for all.
Dear head of the Father Pumas, as soon as we do the business for the city and the good and welfare of the community, you just make a prayer. Amen.
This is item C. This is approval of agenda.
I will push through your agenda. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. So item D citizens comments. So at this point, we allow anybody to speak on anything they feel inclined to speak on. It's going to state your first and last name, where you reside, and that is it. And you're allowed about three minutes. If you're here for an agenda item, feel free to just wait for the actual agenda item. At this point, Mr. Chair, you can open citizens comments.
We will open citizens comments.
Thank you very much. Anybody want comment at this time?
Okay. Well, close citizen comments.
Very good. This is item E approval of minutes. So this is approved of planning commission regular meeting minutes from August fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. We had a rezoning for the Casey's gas station, the rezoning for one zero zero one South Goddard Road, twenty-third South Edition final plat, and the Goddard Crossing site plan.
Make a motion to approve the planning commission regular minute meeting minutes from August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain. I wouldn't hear.
Okay. Are you abstaining as well? Do you want to abstain as well, or did you?
I wouldn't hear.
Okay. Do you want? That's fine. You can abstain if you want to. I'm just asking. Very good. Item F border zoning appeals. This is F one variance for facade requirements. This is the variance twenty-three dash one. Brandon Welkin has submitted a variance application for consideration by the planning commission slash border zoning appeals. The variance request is to forego the requirements of Article eleven of the subdivision regulations requiring a facade covering for the standalone metal building. Brandon would like to put a boat RV's building, storage building on three lots that are running Martin's Drive. He would like this consideration given his building would extend fifty percent above the fence that he is erecting, that the fence would be put up with the metal fence as opposed to chain link with slats. He'd also like to introduce more landscaping in that area and hopefully review favorable in this regard. He's actually backtracking a little bit on the landscaping portion of it actually due to the fact that we can't run irrigation to it. So he's looking at more at the possibility of having more signage and some additional amenities in that area, which he'll be able to speak more on. So the following requirements are found in Article ten dash one oh seven C. So variances from the provisions of these regulations shall be granted by the board only in accordance with the standard set out in section ten dash one oh seven D, maybe granted only in following insisted and no others. To vary the applicable minimum lot areas with depth requirements, to vary applicable regulations including maximum height and lot coverage of minimum yard requirements, vary dimension provisions for permitted obstructions in required yards, including fences in section three one oh three F, vary the applicable number of required off-street parking spaces and amount of off-street loading requirements in Article five, vary the applicable dimension signed provisions of section seven dash one oh two regarding general standards and section seven one oh four regarding district regulations, and to vary applicable requirements in section ten dash one oh seven C, one through five above in conjunction with conditional use applications for non-conforming non-residential structures and uses of the provisions in section eight dash one oh five, to vary the applicable provisions permitted by the floodplain regulations, and then seven to vary any design-related provisions of these regulations, either in part or in full, such design regulations can be included in Article eleven. So we're going with seven on this one. So this is found under KSA twelve dash seven fifty-nine. So number one, that the variance request arise from such conditions which is unique to property in question, which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner, the applicant. So the property owner has not placed any building upon the land yet, has not created any actions against these provisions. The properties are unique in that they are commercial, not highly visible from US fifty-four since they are blocked from view by the southern properties. So this is off of Martin's instead of on fifty-four directly abutting the frontage road. The variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. So screening will be in place, and the property owner has agreed to the planning commission's request to place a more desirable fence on the lot as opposed to a chain link. So we'll go into that a little bit more detail, but this is the same request for the boat RV for that fencing requirement. Originally, there was discussion about having a chain link fence or slats. Planning commission said it might be more desirable to see a fence that's more aesthetically pleasing on the north side, directly across from the residential. So he has complied with that. He would like to put in a metal screening instead of a chain link with slats. And so it kind of in tandem with that, he's hoping for a favorable outlook in terms of the variance request. Since his building is going to be for boat and RV storage, it's actually going to be a little bit more than fifty percent above the fence for that boat RV. And so that's what he's typically, if it was fifty percent or more, we'd require a facade requirement from Article eleven. That the variance design will not adversely affect public health, safety, morale, or convenience, prosperity, general welfare, and that the granting of variance desire would not be opposed to general spirit and ten of these regulations, and will not affect health, safety, or welfare. So it would not affect public health, safety, morals, or convenience, prosperity, general welfare. It's not against the general spirit and ten of these regulations, due to my personal opinion is what I feel. Given that directly to the east, there is already a boat RV storage building there. This is the property in question. These are the three lots. This is the existing boat RV storage from a different property owner. This is residential across the street. These are those duplexes off of Martin's Court. This is all commercial to the south, with the frontage road being further to the south. Originally, we were talking about possible landscaping these, but he is going to put in a more aesthetically pleasing metal fence over here as opposed to chain link with slats. This fence right now already exists. It's this wooden fence with his neighbor to the east, and then this one will just be simply chain link abutting these commercial properties to the south. He's hoping to be viewed favorably through forego the facade requirements so that he can put more improvements along this area. As mentioned originally, we were talking about landscaping. I think we're going to, since it'd be difficult to provide irrigation to that area, he wants to do something a little bit different, perhaps riverwalk or something of that nature, and then signage, more aesthetically pleasing signage of a similar nature to what you see typically like a residential development. Public notice was given in current a small cost. Legally, it's approved as form. It is recommended the planning commission approve facade variance requests for the boat RV storage of Brandon Welkins. As mentioned, Brandon Welkin is here, so if you want, you can approach the planning commission and answer any questions they may have. Yeah, we just need to say right here to state your first and last name and your address, and then if you have the images that you want to share with the commission at this time.
Brandon Welkin. So like he explained, we'd like to put up a metal fence, somewhere like a metal building fencing. I'll give you guys some pictures of that. How tall is it? So the fence next door is six foot already. In order to do boat RV storage, I need to be about sixteen foot, and then I just have a slope off towards the back to the south side of the property. So if you flip to the very first page, you'll see the first building we want to put up would be the boat RV storage, just kind of the site plan I've kind of come up with so far. So you do about sixteen foot facing to the north, and then it's sloped towards the south. The building's going to be far enough away from the road, I think. I think most of the fence is going to cover it. It's not going to stick up on the source line, I would think. And the neighbor next door, his building is obviously way taller than what it is, this fence is. I would imagine his building is pushing sixteen foot. This is six foot fence. This is our actual ledger.
Sixteen foot tall?
I would guess to the peak of that building is probably about sixteen foot.
I think he was asking how tall the fence was going to be.
Oh, no, it'll be, our fence will be six foot, and then the building facing north will be approximately sixteen foot tall slope. And then, because we have to get a fourteen foot drop shore for the boat RV storage. In order to fit an RV, it has to be at least fourteen foot.
Those can be enclosed?
Mm-hmm.
Totally enclosed or just?
It'd be totally enclosed. It's drop shores.
And any outdoor storage?
I'd like to fill the building out first, but I mean, if we could do outdoor, I mean, if it's acceptable, yeah, I'd like to do some outdoor storage as well.
You're going to put a building up like the one that's already here, sixteen feet?
It won't be a gable or a roof. It'll be slopes. So your drop shores will face north, and you'll just kind of, the roof will slope is off to the south.
Single slope shed roof.
Okay.
Stop from sixteen foot, don't come back and then.
Probably about fourteen foot towards the back, I'd imagine. Step one for our project, I need to get our fence put up. So that's kind of where I'm at with the variance. Once we get the fence put up, then I can start getting the plans together for the building.
Building fifteen foot deep?
Yep. That'll be, no, it'll be fifty foot deep, and we'll have fifteen, fifteen by fifty units.
I would say fifteen or fifty foot wide.
Yeah, it'll be fifty foot wide and two hundred and twenty-five foot long. So that's taken up the whole, as far as I can build.
So the variance we're actually approving is for the facade of the building, not for the fence, right? Or if that's what we're talking about.
That's right. The variance he's requesting is for the facade requirements.
And then chain.
Typically, a building, if we say it's significantly exposed to the public, that means that it's either right on the street, or the building extends fifty percent above the fence so that you can see at least fifty percent of the building. So since the building itself is taller than the fence by at least fifty percent, we're saying he needs a facade requirement. And so if you're going to waive the facade requirement, you have to apply for a variance, and we have to take that to the planning commissions. That's what's being considered today. The site plan that you're seeing is not an official site plan. It's a general mockup, so this doesn't take into it. I haven't verified it for completeness or anything. This is not considered a formal site plan. You will see a formal site plan in the future, which would take into account setback requirements and everything else. But he doesn't want to go hire an architect to put together a building unless he knows that he can get a variance for the facade requirements. If he can't get a variance for the facade requirements, then he will have to take the, architect will have to take that into account and use material that's appropriate for that building for the facade portion.
Discussion?
No, looks good.
So we're required, everybody, if it's above certain height, to put a facade on it? Is that just down below?
No, it wouldn't be down below. It would be facing the street.
Hey, that was the new, that was the provisions that was adopted when we had the joint workshop back in two thousand and twenty, I think. So the idea was that metal buildings was always historically, as you remember from Mr. Duncan Amber, historically frowned upon, and he referenced it as being a ten alley. And so the compromise was if we're going to allow metal buildings, the planning commission city council is going to allow metal buildings, are we going to have certain provisions in place that require at least the facade to be different? Are we going to say no metal buildings at all, or are we going to say we will allow metal buildings with that facade that's abutting the street to be changed? So that's a more aesthetically pleasing, has to be determined by the planning commission. And the only difference would be, is that building behind another building? Can you even see it? Is it blocked by a fence? Is it screened by trees or something? Is it considered significantly exposed to the public? And it's not. The facade requirements are mute because you can't even see the building. But if you can see the building, which is a situation that we ran into with pickleball, where it's significantly exposed, then it needs to have a significant wrap, has to be determined by the planning commission. So since this building is extending tall enough, since this is a boat RV storage, it's above the fence enough that you can view it significantly from the street, then I determine that he needs a facade requirement on it. And that if he wants to waive those provisions, he needs to take it to the planning commission.
A different requirement on the one behind pizza hut?
Yes. Yeah, that one was, had a facade requirement, which was, you saw the site plan, it was approved, it was some additional masonry and everything else that went on top of that. That one was a fifty-fifty split though. It was about ten feet. Was that the two that was on that one?
Kind of close to fourteen or sixteen?
Sixteen feet.
That'll be about sixteen foot tall into six foot fence.
How many doors on the front of it?
Fifteen of them on that building.
That would do a lot of good, but.
There wouldn't be a whole lot of facade showing anyway.
Be doors.
Be mainly garage doors.
Yeah.
It sets far, I mean, it sets pretty far back on the fence line. It'd be, that one more.
And the other ones are going to be, they'll be shorter. Those would be, would this variance be for just this one building or all three?
I haven't seen the site plan, so I'm not sure how many buildings would be proposed.
I'm just looking at.
Three.
Preliminary.
Well, the variance, I suppose, could apply to the properties in tandem. I'm not always sure how many buildings will be proposed originally. I imagine you could grant a variance for all three if you wanted to be extra discretion. If you felt that some are closer to the street than others and shouldn't have a facade, that's completely extra discretion.
Yeah. Can we give a variance on the first building and then have to see about the other two?
Yeah, completely extra discretion. So if you felt that one building should be allowed or felt it was acceptable to have a facade on one, you could approve just one building to have a facade, and other ones to be, have a requirement for a facade, whatever you want to see.
Or we could just determine that later, that we're going to have a facade requirement on the other two buildings?
Yeah, that sounds good. Since that does set back forward a little bit.
Way back up the street, like I said, most of it's going to be garage doors.
Yeah. But these two need, took it on the end to kind of face the street. They're in uniform.
Can we go back to that picture you had? Like over with the frontage where this fence was proposed to be? So are you, you're maintaining all three of those access, those entrance points to the property, or is that?
Um, we'll start off on this prime one. Far east drive is probably the one we use. Once all the buildings are put up, we might use a far west one. I don't see that we need to use all three of them in there, but I don't think.
The fence is proposed across the whole frontage space?
Yes.
Mostly, not very much of the building you're seeing.
No, other than the.
The two side ones.
Those two, and those two smaller buildings you're seeing will be a little bit shorter. Those will be fourteen by thirty units. So I'll have to have about a ten foot drop shore to get in there. So those will be about twelve foot on the tallest points.
Not concerned about.
Concerned about what's facing the street here.
Mm-hmm.
What are you going to use for gates on this fence?
I'd like to do sanitary on a little bit electric gate. So we can have twenty-four hour access. Yeah.
Discussion? Manny?
No, I mean, it appears you're just going to be looking at fence. So, I mean, if you were going to do anything aesthetic, it would be at the fence and not, the buildings are going to be covered up for the most part, right? So I don't know that adding, you know, up to a water table, a masonry or something on the ends of those two small buildings, it's like, you know, when are you ever going to see it? Just when the gate rolls open? So that's, that's a different situation for us, so. How many gates in there do you think will be in the future? Will it be two?
At the most, it'll be two.
Kind of on either, on either end of that north side?
The east and the west side is a problem.
Yeah.
I'd say definitely, personal opinion, granted for this one, those two based on the design of the building, just to make sure it doesn't change from a monopass to a gable or something, and that would even more expose. Does your motion? Just to be safe. I can't make a motion. I can only suggest you guys have to make the motion.
I make a motion except for variance for this building, the south one.
Okay.
And these two are ready to be built. Come back to the planning commission. We will take a look at it.
Okay. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Follows, we need official site plans for all those.
Yes.
Work with your architect in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys are welcome to stay the rest of the night, or if you want.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
This is item F two. This is a lot split for the Goddard Galleria, SPL dash twenty-three dash four. So MKEC has submitted a lot split. I'm happy to wait to get the split a lot in the Goddard Galleria into two tracks. Lot splits have to be approved by the planning commission prior to being recorded with the register of deeds. The planning commission is considering approving a lot split for lots in the Goddard Galleria. The following criteria are found under Article twelve, one twenty-two point three. So no lot split can be approved if a new street or alley is needed or proposed. There are no new streets or alleys being proposed. Vacation of streets or alleys, setback lines, access control or easements is required or proposed. There are no vacations being required. Such action result in significant increase in services requirements, utilities, schools, traffic control, streets, et cetera, or will interfere with maintaining existing service levels, additional curb cuts, repeating, et cetera. So there's not a significant increase in services. There is less street right-of-way than required by these regulations or the comprehensive plan unless such dedication can be made by separate extension. There's not requiring less street right-of-way. All easement requirements have not been satisfied. There are no changes to easements. That area is already platted, and there are platted easements. Such split will result in track without direct access to the streets. Both lots will have access to the frontage road and a private drive to the south. A substandard-sized lot or parcel will be created. So C two general business district, minimum lot width is seventy feet and minimum lot depth is a hundred. Lots being created for track A is a hundred thirteen by two hundred ninety-four. Track B is eighty-seven point five seven by another two hundred something. That blanked out over there. Such action will result in a lot split being more than two tracks, except for industrial zone, platted lots, which may be split to two or more tracks. So they're only asking for two tracks with this lot split. So here's the two lots. This is one lot right now currently, and they want to split it down right here, about two-thirds and one-third. Now, this is the property in question. You have Brahms over here. Starbucks is underway. This is track A and track B. This is the south frontage road, and this is that private drive. Both of them will have access to both sides, north and south. Eventually, legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended. As the planning commission approved the lot split for the Goddard Galleria, case number SPL T dash twenty-three dash four, and we do have Joey Denneke of MKEC here representing the applicant. So if you do have any questions.
What are they planning on putting there? Any ideas?
First and last name with your address.
Sure. Joey Denneke, MKEC, engineering four eleven North Web Road, Wichita, Kansas. Agent on behalf of the applicant. So they're splitting it. It's going to be a MedWise medical office building site there on the west. So the site there, they've, they've determined that's the approximate size that they're needing for the location for parking and for the building. And so they wanted to split off the east track so for future development to have any other sort of commercial building on site there. So with that, that's kind of the gist of it. If there's any other questions.
I'm just curious on what you're going to filter.
Yeah.
Do we know how big the Dairy Queen's, the width of that lot is? I mean, just as a comparison?
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't looked it up. I'm not sure. I'll get the dairy queen's lot is.
So that remaining track B, I mean, it's a suitable size for fast food or something of that nature or something?
Yeah, I think so. You know, it's, it's meeting the requirements, as Mike mentioned, on the width and the length there. So it depends on what type of, you know, site would go in there.
Sure. If there's multiple options, I can. If there's, there's multiple options, I guess.
Sure. Exactly. Yep.
So the entrances are gonna be off Killam Drive, is that right?
Yes. Just like, uh, Brahms and Starbucks. They'll have direct access onto the south frontage road, and then they can also jump onto that private drive behind Brahms that runs east west. You can come to that as well.
Thank you.
Going in there?
It's just a small lot still big enough for.
Just paying what they put in there yet?
Yeah. A lot there's options, but a lot there's all that stuff.
So we're studying.
We're studying.
Hey, thanks.
Looks good. Okay.
Looking for a motion then?
I move to approve the lot split for the Goddard Galleria, case SPL T twenty-three dash four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You still want to stay with the night?
Or are you gonna stick around for the sign?
Actually, uh, I'm the chair of the side panel. You can run the register, you sit back, no.
Twenty-four, sure, yeah. I don't think so likely. I say this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item G, there is none. This is item H, new business. So this is the H one final planned unit development for Tanganyika Wildlife Park Edition. So Boston Company has submitted a final planned unit development, a PUD layout for Tanganyika Wildlife Park, TWP. This is step four of four steps for final approval and adoption of a PUD. A PUD is considered a custom zoning classification. Uh, the first step was the public notice and hearing, which happened on December ninth of twenty nineteen. Jim Valtz, his representative, showed a concept idea for the planning commission's consideration. The second step was the preliminary plat, which was approved by the planning commission on December thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. The third step was the final plat, which was also approved by the planning commission on December thirteenth of twenty twenty-one. The final plat was then approved by the city council on January eighteenth of twenty twenty-two. This is step four for consideration and adoption by the planning commission. The final consideration will be before the city council, which, if it is approved, an ordinance will be published in the city newspaper. So the planning commission is considering approving a final planned unit development layout for Tanganyika Wildlife Park Edition. Final consideration will be before the city council. Total land area is around four point seven million, total acres about one hundred eight. Maximum lot coverage, there is no limitation. Maximum building height, sixty feet. Access points will be one from Hawkins and an access point from one ninety-ninth. Future animal exhibits, restaurants, animal barns, and outdoor entertainment are slated for this development. This is Tanganyika Wildlife Park final PUD. As mentioned, this whole thing is basically what entails our, the customizable zoning classification of a PUD. So that's what's being under consideration for tonight. Access, as mentioned, is be off of Hawkins Lane. We, the city did give, um, sixty-foot easement, um, access control over onto one ninety-ninth. So this development can, um, in the future, if paved, access one ninety-ninth for future, um, commercial freight or something of that nature. This is a concept rendering to outline some of the ideas for the future growth and development of the Tanganyika Wildlife Park. Financially and unlawfully, it's approved as a form. It is recommended the planning commission approve the final planned unit development for Tanganyika Wildlife Park Edition. And I do believe we have. In the background, if you do have questions for him about the future of his development.
Very good, Hank.
Just one question, I mean, I've got that future possible access to a hundred ninety-ninth street. Is that, uh, considered part of city, street, or is that private drive?
So this portion right over here, this is all private drive.
Okay.
Um, unless he was, he was dedicated to the city, it would have to be dedicated to the city. Right now it's platted, it's not being dedicated. It's gonna be a private drive. The other land, as soon as you cross over here, this is city land on this part, and we've given, um, sixty feet, uh, of easement. So that portion right there, since it is easement and it's dedicated, we would have to determine if it's private or if it's gonna be a public road. And so that's, that's something that's gonna be up for determination. Right now.
Stretch your ground on over to a hundred eighty-third right there.
Yeah, it runs all the way over the one ninety-ninth, around this portion, sixty feet.
Oh, yeah.
Since it's right now, it's, this whole area is unplatted. Um, since it's not dedicated as street right of way, it would most likely be a private drive that we're giving them an easement for. So at that point, it's still, unless, like I said, it was, unless it was dedicated to the city, any road that's not dedicated to the city is private.
I knew development, they're gonna do whatever they want.
Planning.
They're gonna go in there and do whatever they want.
As long as it's acceptable within the, the parameters of the planning to develop. Yeah. Minor variations can be approved through myself administratively, major changes would have to be approved by planning commission and then city council. So if it went from, if it was no longer functioning as a zoo and they switched to like a golf course, that would be a major deviation. Um, and we would have to kind of see how that would change out, so. That would have to be approved by planning commission, city council. But everything else that's allowed, generally speaking, um, it's considered acceptable in an R four district. So apartments, you know, single-family houses, that's, there's already currently some single-family homes over here. Um, as well as anything that's allowed in a C two commercial, so this is like an amalgamation of basically residential and commercial combined. You have proposed restaurant over here, you have amenities and commercial down here, you have single-family residential over here. If hypothetically, they wanted to put in an apartment complex, they could by right with that zoning. So that's where the PUD is unique in that way, instead of it being just residential, just commercial, it's a mix of the two. So that's, that's why it has so many steps. It started out back in twenty nineteen, and now here we are, finalizing this custom zoning classification. It takes some time.
Do we know a plan? Do you have plans for that?
Yeah, I can have to walk you through them.
Yeah.
So that's right, and then a grace button. Yeah, so, um, the, the primary, uh, goal of this, that, you know, so, is to build a new safari park. And, um, you know, the additional land from the city, uh, just would, will help with that. So that, um, basically the giraffe feeding and the park kind of ends right here, right now. So there would be a path that would kind of come into this plaza area, uh, where we would have another eating, another eating space. A new flamingo exhibit, this is our new gift shop, and then, uh, something we call safari station where, uh, the plan is to do, uh, trackless trains, so rubber tire trains, but that looks kind of like a train. Uh, we'll take you through on this track here, uh, whether it's asphalt or concrete or something, but. And then, uh, we'll have safari trucks that were, we'll have made, and those will be smaller groups, obviously, and you'll, they'll take you more through the middle of the safari. Um, much more like, uh, you would experience at Animal Kingdom and Disney, if you've been on, at, at their place. So very similar experience to that. And then, uh, my dad and I are debating right now whether I get to do this or not, but my, my, my hope is to also be able to let people kayak, uh, through the middle of safari. So just like you were on the Zambezi or something, you could kind of kayak through the safari and stuff, so. Um, I don't know what that's gonna cost yet, but it's something I would like to do.
I didn't finish a little pat trial arrow.
So, um, so the, you know, three ways to kind of see the animals through that space. And then, uh, down here is like a bunch of just small animal exhibits, uh, with a path that walks through, and then some cabanas on the inside. So it'd be very similar to like a lazy river, uh, experience with cabanas on the inside of the lazy river, except in this case you're walking on the path where the lazy river would be and, and animal exhibits on both sides. And then there's a, a much new, uh, new, nice, big, uh, lion exhibit. So we have these amazing lions and, uh, just had babies, and they're all behind the scenes. You know, unless you follow us on like TikTok or something, you don't get to see them, or, so. Um, so we'll have a nice new lion exhibit for those guys finally. And then, um, you know, the, the safari barn is something that we've already been constructing, but, uh, you know, it houses four, five rhy- rhinos right now, four, soon to be four, but. Uh, and then we'll have other mixed species, uh, in these like three pastures here, so we'll have a mix of rhinos, giraffes, um, some other hoof stock, ostrich, things like that. So it'll kind of be like the safari of Africa, basically. And on the backside, uh, move some of our cheetah breeding facilities back here. Um, another fun idea is I, I wanna do like a, we wanna do a cheetah run, where you watch a cheetah go from zero. I don't know if they'll make seventy in the, in the amount of span of land that we have. Um, because they need, uh, closer to quarter mile, but, uh, you know, you, you'll watch them go zero to fifty or sixty, and, uh, and that would be a pretty cool experience. And then in the, in the middle here, we have a safari camp, which we wanna build a, a replica of Jim and Sherry's favorite camps, one of their favorite camps in Africa. And, uh, so there will be overnight stays in the middle of the safari. Um, very high-end glamping, so there'll be like tents, but, you know, their own bathroom, showers, hot tubs on the back deck kind of thing. And then, um, this is a, a larger event space, so, uh, right now I would like it to hold, seat at least five hundred, which, you know, there's only three other venues in the Wichita area that will seat that many. Three or maybe four now with the stockyards. And so, um, that demographic wise, I sit on the board at Visit Wichita, and, uh, they had, uh, a strategist come in and, and talk about, uh, out of the seven hundred, uh, direct marketing organizations, you know, for cities and stuff, that they surveyed around the world, one of the top three trends was, uh, off-site meeting space for conventions and things like that. So, um, my hope is, uh, with that trend, and then also the fact that there's not much supply in the Wichita area, that we can obviously do larger events, whether it be corporate or wedding or whatever else. So, uh, just pulling those people out here into this economy. And then, um, up, up at the top part, we have a, uh, a restaurant that would be accessible basically outside of the park. So, um, at, you know, at some point in that phase, we'd like to add a restaurant there that you could come and you could sit on the patio and you could look at the animals, you know? Uh, and just be an awesome view and, and, uh, enjoy, enjoy the, the food and everything. So, um, that would be a nice restaurant just for, for the city. And then, uh, down at the bottom, there's just some ancillary stuff. I, I'm hoping to build a microgrid, uh, so that the park can be most, almost completely self-sustaining in terms of power. So we, my hope is to line this whole barn with solar on the south side, as well as our new barn, as well as build an anaerobic digester. Uh, it's for all of the compost, um, part of which I think we could work with the city on, but, um, uh, anyway, so, uh, to generate the electricity, all the electricity needed for the park. So not doing it in, I mean, I call it cheating, but you know, where you're buying credits at some solar farm or wind farm somewhere, and you're like neutral, like I wanna be completely, uh, the only zoo in the country that's completely self-sufficient when it comes to electricity. So, uh, we have a plan for that, and so, so that's kind of, um, you know, for that, that space, most of it's pasture. And animal pens, like there's not, there's not much out there really, uh, on, on the new piece that's getting plotted. But, um, I mean, out of the forty or fifty acres that encompasses this, that safari park and the new, new putt is almost all its pasture land. So just, uh, you know, you gotta have enough space so that, um, there won't be tons of animals out there, but a lot of them are bigger animals, that kind of stuff, and they'll just, you know, you try to keep any kind of grass and stuff out there, they just obliterate it, so they need space. So, and then we're, we're, uh, getting ready to start or working on develop, uh, our capital campaign to basically, um, it's gonna take a couple of years at least to, to raise. I mean, I've had estimates anywhere from fifteen million to twenty-eight million to, to build all this, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Did you, go ahead. I was gonna say, I see a lot of water feature stuff, is this something the city has anticipated, or, or is this all gonna be from real water? Well, I mean, as far as supplying for?
No, we haven't anticipated what the water going to look like, and I don't know.
It's all, all well, I mean, um, the public buildings like the visitor's center and the like restaurant or whatever, like those will be city water.
Yeah.
Um, but everything else will be wells. Yeah, there's, there's a new well we just put into that safari barn. Um, if we're getting irrigated, so now we're asking for additional wells, and so we're working with a company to unwaterize and stuff for that.
No more discussion, so we're looking for a motion.
I'd like to motion approve the final plan of the development for Tanganyika Wildlife Park for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Open statement of the night, if you want.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Item I, this is staff report, so myself being Michael Scott, and we need to know, director compiles a short concise report, outline irrelevant information presented to the planning commission. So the city of Goddard has decided to announce that Craig Crossett will be the next city administrator of Goddard, following Indiana's vote by the city council. Crossett is currently city manager of Sterling, Kansas, uh, where he has worked for the past four years. Before that, Crossett was the assistant city administrator for Goddard. He held a master's in public administration from the Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs at Wichita State University, and bachelor's degree from Fort Hayes State University. So we're excited to have him come back and join us for the future growth and development city. Uh, city council agreed to meet with the planning commission on October ninth at seven PM. This is a regular planning commission meeting, and it will have a regular agenda items for the planning commission to consider. After the planning commission has conducted their work, the mayor will call a special meeting, uh, to order and invite the planning commission to join the city council in open discussion about growth and development. So it is a regular planning commission meeting, so you guys will have your regular agenda items, you know, F one, G one, et cetera. And then after that, city council will invite you to join them at the table, then it'll be a special meeting, then there'll be open dialogue about growth and development. Uh, particularly as pertains to duplexes, duplexes in general, and duplex ratios when it comes to new developments. And so that was something that was, uh, key to be considered during this time, so. This is the crew, so you obviously have the city council and the planning commission. Twelve in total. And that is it, we're on to item J, planning commission for comments. No comments?
The, uh, meeting next, next month with the city council, is it mainly just the duplexes or are there other items gonna be discussed as well?
There was two items in particular, one of them, I mean duplexes and duplex ratios, I consider kind of one, so duplexes in general. The other item was, um, older lots in old Goddard that were non-conforming, meaning that they're like fifty by one hundred, fifty width. meaning that they're like fifty by one hundred, fifty width and one hundred depth. They didn't meet certain requirements of the subdivision regulations. So the consideration would be, how does the planning commission city council want to handle those type of lots? One of them in particular can't be built on right now by anything. And then other ones, if they are burnt down, would they even be allowed to be rebuilt? And so there's some questions about that. And so that was one of the major, other discussion topics would be lots that are non-conforming in Old Town and what can be done about them. So that's, that's what you want to.
I know at the last meeting, we had, we discussed Goddard Road. I mean, that would probably take a lot of coordination towards what plan for future, how touted plan for the future of Goddard Road itself.
Right. And it'll be an open dialogue. So if there was something that you felt you wanted to add to the meeting and discuss as well, I mean, you're more than welcome to bring that up. I mean, if you wanted to just bring that up during the meeting, you're welcome to.
Okay.
So you can go in and follow us through. And then we're, we're trying to get on the same page. But two, if not three, people will be on city council come January. So we will be kind of off page again once we get new recruits. So I don't quite understand it.
Do you think we'll put it off to next year?
I'll, I'll do whatever you guys want to do.
I think there's a basis to start with. If there's that discussion earlier than later, sooner than later, there's a basis to at least like, you know.
We'd be going over the whole same thing again come January. No matter what, I mean, there's going to be at least two because they're not running again.
Right.
And the third that's running still has to be elected. So you guys are doing it all for it? I know the whole thing was to get on the same page and we're probably a little, little late to the game for it. But we'll get on the same page and by the time something comes up.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly that element of turnover. I think when this was brought up at the last council meeting, they still wanted to meet. And then when I brought it back up again to the planning commission at the last planning commission meeting, they, they said emphatically they still wanted to meet. So at this point, we're simply just meeting to, I mean, for nothing else, just as some show of solidarity and moving forward. And then at least these discussion items, you know, potentially, as you said, two will be gone and we'll have two new ones. But if three stay hypothetically, let's, you know, let's say one of them does get reelected, at least those three will be privy to the information starting to be discussed. And as, as mentioned, it would just be a show of solidarity moving forward. The city administrator, the new one, is hoping to attend that meeting. So if, if nothing else, whatever's discussed, even if the new council, even if you have a complete, the majority do change over in, in January, at least the city administrator will be, will be present for that meeting.
He is planning on attending.
He is, yes. If that, if that changes, I'll, I mean, I can't let you know between now and then other than maybe just calling you. But he, I did text him to ask him if he was planning on attending. He said yes. So at least we can get the opinions of the planning commission collectively and then any council members that are residual after January and hopefully use that as some sort of cohesive idea to move forward for.
It'd be nice to talk to him and see what his ideas are.
Yeah, he will be present. So you could definitely pick his brain, his hair.
I'll lay it.
I just wanted to say, you know, the city, I assume it was supporting it, but the event on Sunday afternoon here where they had vendors on Main Street.
Oh, yes.
So my family and I came out. It was well attended. So I appreciate the city putting that on or whoever was involved in making that happen.
Farmers market?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it was, looked like a good event. Looked, there was a lot of people there, so.
Yeah, I believe it was the last one of the year. And so depending on how successful it was this year, it seemed that it was relatively successful. I can't tell you the numbers, but it'll continue into the future.
Yeah. I believe that was the fourth one. I mean, somewhere in it, I think progressively every time we had more vendors that were interested in coming out. I think it was, it's been pretty successful for, for businesses and for bringing people to back to downtown Goddard. And I think the chamber is a big, big part in that. Of course, the city council, I know some of the members on that have been really instrumental in getting the word out there too.
Yes, Councilman Fish definitely spearheaded that, never.
Been, been on it. I think it's great. Have you ever, any feedback from the community on it? Are they enjoying it?
Oh, I couldn't say honestly. I mean, in terms of feedback on Facebook, I don't check Facebook or anything of that nature. But I think as far as I could tell, it's been perceived in a positive light. As mentioned, feed on the street is a big deal for, for businesses on our main street. And so I believe it's very beneficial for Wald Denim, Co-Fellow, Becky Coast Snow Cone, those type of businesses that really, that really benefit from direct contact from, from patrons. And so I think that's been viewed positively, dealing like donors, for example, if they're open.
And a couple of weeks coming to there, then two more, more people each time. I've been to two of them.
It was well attended.
That's good. That's good. I think the more people we draw in for outside, not even just local dollars, but outside dollars.
Absolutely.
Move to here.
Second.
I make a motion. Are you guys taking, all in favor?
So is that a motion on Commissioner Klein and Second of Walker? Is that a motion in a second?
I think we actually have first.
Okay. So that's a motion of Commissioner Walker to Second of Klein or Second of Hall? Are we going with a motion in a second or a motion?
Motion in a second.
Okay, very good.
That's where it came out first.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Where the official went.
Okay.